I'll call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the North Reading School Committee. First order of business this evening is to entertain nominations for the position of chairman of the committee. So I'll open it up now for nominations.
I nominate Mr. Cliff Bowers.
Nomination of Mr. Bowers by Mr. Venezia.
Second.
The second by Mr. Webster. Are there further nominations? Okay, this time I'll take a vote.
Before I take a vote, I just want to say Cliff's put in eight long, hard years on this committee and he's probably the hardest working guy. He gets, we get every cent worth of Cliff's salary on this committee.
We don't pay him.
Oh, we don't? And...
I thought it was Director Bowers.
It's truly deserved and I'm looking forward to serving this year under Cliff's chairmanship.
I'll echo that. Cliff's been a workhorse for the last eight years on this committee.
And maybe he can take a break from a few of the subcommittees since he's going to be chairman.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Congratulations, Mr. Bowers.
Mr. Chair. I've got to speak up. You heard over the two of us.
Obviously, Danny was pinch hitting for Gerald.
I already, I already pinched it on the agenda.
Other than that, there's no changes.
All right, well, I think the next item that we do is we look for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Jerry Venezia as vice chair.
Second, that nomination?
I accept nomination.
I don't want to say anything about Jerry.
Well, he's hardworking.
His seventeen years, he deserves vice chair.
And most of the time, he puts the committee ahead of his personal business.
Yes.
Sometimes he does.
I thought all of you did.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, and now we're looking for nominations for secretary.
I'd volunteer for that role if someone wants to nominate.
Yeah, I'll nominate Mel Webster for role of secretary.
Second?
I'll second.
Will you accept?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative representative.
Nominate Julie Kopke for that. I think Julie has done a good job with that this year. I can definitely tell you she's on top of everything going on at State House. No question about that, so I nominate Julie.
I'll second.
Julie, will you accept?
Yes, I will.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Julie.
Thank you.
Now, we also have some subcommittee assignments.
Did somebody tell Janine she got reelected or?
Yeah, she told us she wasn't going to.
All right, okay, all right.
And she told me that she was, after election, she's told me she was going to suburban coalition meeting on Wednesday.
Thursday? Oh, it's Wed- Wednesday, right?
So... So the policy committee, we need two members. Are there any volunteers?
Well, this is one where you and, I know you and Julie are on this year. I think Cliff, I think, has been on it for eight years.
Eight years.
I think it'd be good to change that up. I would volunteer for it.
Good.
And I would also recommend Janine or, Janine, I had contact with Janine, she said, basically, whatever you put me on is fine with me.
I would suggest that anything that nobody else wants, we put Janine on it because...
Name up for everything right now.
So unless anybody else wants it, then I'd accept the nomination and I'd recommend that Janine be the other nomination.
Do we vote on these?
Yes, we do.
All right, well, we'll...
Well, I'd nominate Mel Webster and Janine Embriano for policy. Do you want it, Julie?
We have to second it? No, no, no.
Okay.
No.
All right, I'd nominate Mel Webster for, as one of the members in the policy subcommittee.
And there was a second over there. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll nominate Janine Embriano as the second member of the policy subcommittee.
I'll second.
Nominated and seconded. And now we need a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And athletic subcommittee, we need two members. We've had Jerry and Mel on that for some period of time.
I think that, you know, I'd like to stay on to complete the project that we're in the middle of right now, of the athletic slave subcommittee. My goal is to get that done this year because if we don't...
Yeah, I know there's some other interest expressed for this, but again, I'd also like to stay on. We're in the middle of a rather big project.
Who else?
I think Julie expressed some interest. I spoke with Julie and next year, definitely, I would be willing to step down. I just want to get through this project.
Now, let me see, I don't make motions.
Well, I know there's a theory that, you know, to rotate some of these committee shifts, but again, I, you know, I've been on there for about sixteen years and we have a lot going on right now.
We've only eight five members.
I'll nominate Mr. Venezia.
That sounds like a good plan.
Or athletic subcommittee.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Maiden seconded, Jerry Venezia for athletic subcommittee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And Jerry, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move to nominate Mel as the second member in the athletic subcommittee.
Second.
All right, made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Evaluation subcommittee. We have nominations for that or?
I don't know whose interest, but I think the people, I think the people that did it did a very good job.
I'd be interested in staying on it.
I'd like to retire from it.
Yeah, it's...
It's a lot of meetings with John.
Is Janine here?
Yeah, Janine, I think Janine'd be good on that.
Yeah, I do too.
So we need...
I'll nominate Julie for the evaluation subcommittee.
I'll second.
All right, Maiden seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Julie.
Thank you.
I'll also nominate Janine for the evaluation subcommittee.
Second.
Maiden seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Janine. Capital improvements Planning Committee, one member.
Janine's been on this one for three years. I had a discussion with her. She said she could stay on if someone else was interested. I actually have spoken with Julie and Julie's interested in that. I think it's a great committee to learn about what's going on in the town side and the capital improvement stuff and I know Michael's on the committee. John, are you part of it?
I'm not.
It's also an opportunity to interact with the other town.
Right, so I think that's a good, and you're interested, right?
Mm-hmm. My only question is, when do they have meetings?
I think it's four o'clock.
Wednesdays.
Wednesdays at four is it?
In the afternoon?
Four o'clock.
Wednesday is four to six is the...
Can you do that?
They meet pretty frequently.
Yeah, it starts up in the fall, September, October, for a couple kickoff meetings and then as soon as around November hits, it's almost every Wednesday or every other Wednesday.
Until the budget, right?
Four to six, yeah.
Well, if you can't make, I mean...
They do, they take a little break for the holidays.
Okay.
But again, I think that that's a good, it was good for Janine to be on that because she did get that interaction with the other boards, with the finance committee with selectmen. So I nominate Julie Kopke for the Capital Improvements Planning Committee.
I'll second.
Maiden seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Julie. NORCAM Advisory Board, a member.
I've done it for the last year and I've made some meetings and some meetings I haven't made. If anybody else wants to do it, I'd be glad to acquiesce. If not, I'll certainly do it again. Although, it might be a good one for Janine. It's funny, it's a meeting that doesn't all the time involve, you know, the school committee. We may not be on the agenda at all for weeks at a time, but I think there are some projects that we want to get done for the, for the school campus.
Well, you can nominate Janine and if she is averse to it or can't do it, then we can just appoint someone else.
Is anybody else interested or?
I'm not. I had my time.
Will you do it?
I'll stay with it. Yeah, I wanted to see if we could push that, the Performing Arts Center in the gym, get that done.
I'll nominate Mr. Venezia for the NORCAM Advisory Board.
Second?
Second.
Maiden seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finance planning team is chair and vice chair.
Cliff and Jerry.
Jerry and I.
And again, we had this question last year. We don't do the SSBC, right? We don't have to?
No. Those were termed appointments, just like Athletic Facilities Committee?
Because I thought, again, I thought Jerry, though, was the school committee representative.
He is.
But he was appointed to a term.
But I was appointed to one, into a term, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Okay. Congratulations to all the people with new positions. All right, our next item agenda is public input and seeing no public that isn't on the agenda, I guess we can dispense with that. Next, there's a student report and Gabriel's not here, but Dan is.
Yep, man. It's nice to see you all tonight. Student report, what's going on here at North Reading High School. It's that time of the year where it's, finals are coming up, AP, so there's a lot going on academically. Just a few notables for tomorrow, Tuesday, May 10th. The North Shore Chamber of Commerce Honors Scholar Dinner will be honoring the top 5% of the graduating class here at North Reading. So ten students will be attending from North Reading and they will also be attending with about forty other schools in our region. The National Honor Society here at North Reading High School, the induction for National Honor Society for new members is Thursday, May 12th. Congrats to those students here at North Reading. To be inducted into the National Honor Society, you must hold a unweighted GPA of at least 3.3 and be over, and contribute to the North Reading High School atmosphere. So off the top of my head, I believe there's about sixty to seventy members of the junior class being inducted and about nine new members of the senior class as well. The Wakefield Elks will be having their teenager of the month banquet and here at North Reading, six students will be recognized at that. Last week, we will, right now, we're in the midst of our AP exams, which end this Thursday. Our AP exam started last Monday, I believe, with environmental science and chemistry and will go all the way up to this Thursday. So students, I know, for example, we're here from eight o'clock this morning till 5:00 PM taking AP exams, so that's, it's been a great year so far with students really preparing for these and let's hope it turns out well. And senior exams begin May 31st and will end June 3rd and June 3rd also marks the end of the class of 2016, last day here at North Reading High School. And graduation will just be a week after at June 10th. Just some notables going on with the spring athletics. This has been a tremendous year for North Reading Athletics, as you all know, with fall and winter doing fantastic and spring is even, even doing better. The varsity baseball team is 12-0 after beating Northeast Vocational School two to nothing on Saturday. And we face our biggest, one of our biggest opponents so far this year. We face Masconomet, at Masconomet tomorrow, who's 10-2 in the year, so that should be a great game. Softball is doing fantastic as well. They are nine and two. They lost a, I believe they lost to Medford on Friday.
Malden.
Malden, yeah. But they have been putting up a tremendous amount of runs this season. I know that some games they have accumulated more than twenty runs, so they've been doing fantastic.
Lot of home runs too.
Yeah.
Lot, ton of home runs.
Yeah, it's been, I know that team, a lot of senior and junior heavy ages have been doing tremendous and they've been playing with each other for years now, which is great to see. The boys lacrosse team is six and five after losing the past few games. They're actually playing right now. I'm not a hundred percent sure how that's going, but they've been dealt a bad hand on some issues. They've had a lot of injuries to a lot of, a lot of their key players, which is disappointing to see, but I know that hasn't ruined their morale whatsoever with some, and unluckily that all these injuries have been happening to their offensive players, so a lot of kids having to step up and try new positions. So they're trying to handle that as best they can and we're hoping to see a state playoff bid out of them. And track is another doing, is doing fantastic this season with, I know, the girls' track team and also the boys just won the Division Four State Relays, I believe. And track will also be sending a group of girls to the national nationals down in North Carolina this upcoming summer. I know they did that two years ago, I believe, but this year, I believe there's five girls from the senior class going to this national event, which is tremendous. And just a few mentions in the arts and extracurriculars, student council and also class elections will be held two weeks from Tuesday with informational meetings starting tomorrow. So that's nice to see, winding down to the end of the year with, already preparing for next year with student council and class elections. The junior prom was a great success for the junior class. I know personally that many people had some of the time of their lives at Hillview Country Club and the junior class officers did a tremendous job with food catering and photo booths, et cetera, and it was an awesome time. And the seniors are also selling their tickets now for their senior prom, which will be held at the Weston Hotel in Waltham. So that is just a few weeks away too, which is great to see. I know they've put in a lot of work these past four years trying to make this night very special and I think they will, they'll have a great night. That's it for me. And I also have just a student report. This is a document-based question or an essay I had written for AP US History and we had taken our AP US History exam last Friday and my teacher, Mr. Emmerton, had been reviewing us throughout the year and so this essay was on the, how the French and Indian War had impacts on the colonies and the British politically and economically. So that was something we did back in September, so writing an essay on this recently was kind of a nice refresher in our minds. So it also has a rubric attached with comments. I'll pass it around. And that was mostly graded on for our thesis and what we, it was kind of nice to give our own opinion. Usually with essays, we're given these documents that we have to base our argument around, but this was kind of nice to think for yourself and really give your opinion and back it up with facts.
Mr. Chair, question. Did you pitch the shot out Saturday?
I did, well, our, last week with the weather, our pitching rotation got all screwed up.
You had like five games in a week.
Yeah, we had about five games, so our senior pitcher, Greg Johnson, he pitched the first two innings. And then I pitched innings three, four, five, and six. And then senior Sean DeBecky pitched the seventh inning, so we'll see if we can get him some more work before the playoffs.
Had to parcel that game out because no one was ready to go seven innings, right?
Coach Carey would have stretched the season out two more weeks. Stayed with his rotation, believe me.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, it was, yeah, this week, this last week was crazy, but we're hoping to get back on track with the rotation.
Back in rotation now?
Yeah, so we, we'll have Greg pitching tomorrow, Mike McCollough, who's also a junior on Saturday, and then me next Tuesday.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I got to say that I think the success of the baseball and softball team is directly tied to the new batting cage.
Oh, yeah.
Have you been up there?
No, I don't hit.
You don't hit?
No, I don't hit. I don't have, I don't have depth perception, so I'm a pitcher only. I just, I do the cardio bikes and then I go through a little bit. Yeah.
Do they like it up there or?
Oh, they've, oh, they've done, it's been awesome so far.
Really?
Oh, yeah, it's been awesome. Like, if we didn't have that up there, especially with the long winter, I would have no idea what we have done.
That's great, good, yeah, it's good to hear.
And the athletic team's doing great. Mr. Emmerton's a great teacher.
Oh, I love him.
I like that guy.
I do too. Very passionate, what he teaches.
Absolutely. He's a great teacher.
The first teacher I hired as principal.
Really?
He was the first teacher.
I know he inspired my daughter.
He's very good.
Really good teacher.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
As we used to say, you can stay if you'd like. Probably have other things going on.
He's been around long enough.
All right, next item on our agenda is the MSBA SSBC update.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. So a few things I put into your report to highlight for you is, first is the landscaping. So actually, at the time that I wrote this report for you, this is slightly outdated. Actually, a full report of an identification of plants to be replaced, it has been completed. I had indicated here that it was going to be next week, but it actually came into me over the weekend. So there is work planned to begin in earnest, starting next week, because my understanding from a meeting I had on this past Friday with both our project manager and Kevin Nygro and Ron Marsden, both from PNA, and also Joe Callahan from Gilbane, indicated the week of May 16th is when they're hoping to be planting at the site of the former high schools, so some of the kind of the side areas to the field areas and such, and they want to try to coincide a lot of the landscaping replacement at that same time. So a little bit, a little bit ahead of schedule on that from where they first thought that they would be as late as, as recent as late last week. The tennis court resurfacing, I think you're all aware that we had a patch job done on that last fall that we were not pleased with, so they're, they're planning right now to come in tentatively on the Friday before the Memorial Day weekend to do a replacement or a rework of that patch to have it the three days, the long weekend, to seal. There is a bit of a discussion, I did indicate in my meeting on Friday, I don't know where this is going to go, quite honestly, but I, I indicated that I thought that it probably would be in the best interest of all to, to look at the entire seal coating and think about the possibility of doing the whole job over, so there is discussion about the possibility of that being a rejected item. So you might hear more about that at the SSBC meeting tomorrow night. That came in, that came into me late Friday, I think, from Kevin Nygro.
Mr. Chair, if I could on that, I know that my and Mr. Venezia have had fairly lengthy discussions with the tennis coach about his concerns and so this area that you're looking at, is that the area that's starting to bubble up?
So it started, yeah. I think, I think we're all talking about the same area. It's kind of in the middle court, kind of, you know, in that center area, there's almost a discoloration now. That's where they had done the patch. It's now flaking.
Yeah.
But I think we had some earlier concerns around where there was some pitting, for lack of a better way to describe it, I mean, as best I can.
There's pitting all along the net areas.
Yeah, so that discussion, I presented on Friday what I thought was kind of the popular opinion for, for the owner, so to speak, for all of us, and that was that I thought that the entire surface really needed to be looked at closely and be considered for resurfacing. So I don't, unfortunately, it was just late Friday, I don't have a full update, but you might hear more about that tomorrow's meeting.
You could probably wait until the school year too, because what's out there now is not interfering with the play.
Right.
Correct, and I did indicate in your report that, you know, while we're looking at that long weekend, weather's a factor, but it might end up being that it's June when school is, or sometime in the summer when school is out to give it the proper curing time, so. Also from that meeting on Friday, it was revealed that there's, there's a desire, an effort to, to really push the weeks of May ninth, this week and next week, with some paving, some initial paving of the sidewalks. They're looking at the paving of the two parking lot areas down there with a binder coat. I did ask Joe Callahan about graduation and where he thought those parking lots might be in terms of our ability to use them for graduation and he indicated to me that he's optimistic that they could be, they could be lined for graduation. So right now, as you see in the report, they're, they're looking at, you know, kind of an anticipated substantial completion of the project being the week of June 6th, and that is graduation week, so still in flux, but that's the latest update, if you will.
At all somewhat weather dependent, so...
Correct.
Hopefully, this week is very good.
Right.
Right, this week, the weather looks good. Something that's not in the report, but I did speak with Joe, actually Wayne and I, Wayne Harick and I both saw him this morning. We are, the, the contract calls for this site to still be maintained for the lawn cuttings and such by the contractor and they are due, it's amazing how the grass this, in the last several days with so much rain and just today, really, it looks like it grew even, you know, overnight, literally, so.
Today.
He's hoping that they'll be in this week for a lawn cutting, so. And I think the last thing that's not in the report, but we did have an interest in having Bill Brown come out to the SSBC meeting, our landscape contractor, so I did reach out to Brad Dorr on Friday to ask him. He did not confirm that he was, but he knows that we want him there, so.
Good.
And I unfortunately won't be at the meeting, the building committee meeting tomorrow because I have the honors scholars dinner with the, with the seniors, but very good meeting with Kevin Nygro, Ron, and Joe. They're continuing to be extremely responsive. We do have a meeting scheduled for 2:30, I believe, on Wednesday to review the punch list of our items, kind of the list that we all put together. Ms. O'Connell, the middle school principal, Mr. Lepred and I, and Wayne Harick, so they have an update for us on, on that and wanting to hear from us if we're satisfied.
Are we going to be ready to discuss tomorrow the punch list at the four o'clock meeting or?
You know, I don't know, Jerry. I honestly, I just don't know. If I had to guess, I would say yes. I think they, you know, I can't imagine that they wouldn't come in.
They have your list?
Oh, they do, they've sent me an update as to where they think things are and that's what we're going to review on Wednesday. Oh, yeah. And that included some of the items that I think the members had discussed around painting, kind of the light, those light covers in the PAC at the corners, things, all of those kinds of things, so. So a lot has happened in a few days, I expect this week and next week, and as you said, Mr. Bowers, the weather looks really good this week, so I would expect we'll see it quite busy down there.
I've had a question. John, on the, in terms of landscaping, has there been any discussion regarding the, the lack of any wildflowers growing? Are they saying it's too early? Has there been any discussion about that? I don't see any anywhere.
Yeah, no, I did.
I see weeds, but I don't see any wildflowers.
Yeah, I, I spoke, Wayne and I spoke to Joe Callahan very early this morning about it and his, his comment to us was that it's, it's allowed for one cutting, it had that cutting, you know, we explained to him that it had that kind of heavy cutting last year and there's no, he gave us no reason to think that what's there is not going to be what they want it to be, but it just is a, is a time, is a time factor.
I know it's a late spring because of the weather, so that could be part of it.
We have a laundry list of landscaping issues that I hope that we're going to address some of them tomorrow and see where we stand with them. But there's a long, long list, including the front slope, so.
We haven't accepted.
Correct, nothing has been accepted.
And once we accept, we have a year.
Right.
So we haven't even started yet.
The other question I have is, I still don't see a light on the flagpole up front. I drove by, a couple nights ago, I drove by intentionally to see if that light was on. There's, there's no light in the front. Is it installed, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, I don't see it, it's not on, so.
I'm telling you right now, if that light isn't ready tomorrow, when we go to that meeting, I'm going to ask that somebody from Gilbane stand out there with a flashlight every night from eight, 8:00 PM until six in the morning. I'm serious.
I'll, I'll reach out to them and try to get you an update on, on that light.
Okay.
I just, I don't know.
Or name the person, right?
Yes, name of a person with a flashlight, yes.
Thank you. Next, we go to a new business. We have a presentation of Special Education Parent Advisory Council and the Pupil Personnel Services, and this is an annual event, required by law.
Great.
Great.
So, Mr. Bowes, Ms. Conant, the Director of Pupil Personnel Services is here. I think she'd like to make an introduction of our current Special Education Parent Advisory Council President, Mr. McManus, so.
That'd be great. Thank you. So, good evening, members of the school committee. I would like to take a few moments to share with you the collaboration that has taken place between the Special Education Parent Advisory Council and the Pupil Personnel Services Department. Over the course of this year, I have had the pleasure of collaborating with Mr. Steve McManus, our CPAC president. We have worked together in identifying topics and speakers for informational nights hosted for the parents and community of North Reading. These events have been well attended and well received by the community. Mr. McManus has been very thoughtful in selecting relevant and meaningful topics for these events. As PPS Director, I truly appreciate the opportunity to assist and collaborate in this process. These events also provide an opportunity for parents to share their concerns and ask questions. And this feedback allows me to take this in and guide the work that I do as PPS Director. So I very much appreciate the collaboration. I'm very excited and looking forward to continued collaboration over the course of the upcoming school year. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. McManus, our CPAC president.
Thank you. Rotate that. Okay, thank you. So as Cynthia said, my name is Steve McManus. I'm the President of the North Reading Parent Advisory Council. I've presented here before, so it's nice to see everybody again. I'm here today to talk about who we are as a group, how we've been active in the past year, and what our goals for next year are. So just as a way of description and introduction, the CPAC's duties are included, but not limited to advising the district on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, meeting regularly with school officials, participating in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school district's special education programs, and to advocate for the appropriate supports and special education services necessary to meet the individual, individual needs of children with disabilities living in the district, and to ensure that each child receives the individualized support and special education services that they are entitled to under applicable law, both federal and state regulations. And students that fall into this category have been determined to have a disability, and that disability requires specialized instruction. So one of our goals as a group is to serve as a resource not only for the special needs community, but as the general population as well. We made a decision a couple of years ago that's worked out well for us to, that when we have workshops or presentations, we don't just invite the families and parents that are on the special education mailing list, but the email blast goes out to all the families in North Reading. And this has really allowed us to expand our scope and to reach out to more families. So, for example, this year, we had a father who came to one of our events whose son had just received a special ed diagnosis that afternoon, and he came to our event for support and guidance. We've also had parents come to our speaking events specifically at the encouragement of the school staff, and we're very happy, as Cynthia said, to continue our collaboration with the staff of the school system. No one plans to have a child with special needs, so when parents learn that their child has a diagnosis, there's a lot of questions to be answered, and it can feel incredibly isolating. So we, our role is we don't serve as an advocate for parents, but we want to serve as a resource to help parents find the information and answers that they need. As part of this, I also get phone calls and emails from parents outside of the district asking me about special education programming in North Reading, and I answer their questions the best I can. That's typically a family that's considering a move to, to North Reading. A lot of families will move to a school district based specifically on the, on the programming and special ed department of, of that district. And Cynthia is very accommodating to speak with parents as well in that regard. In terms of specific programming, in October, we held our, our Basic Rights in Special Education Workshop, which is a workshop that we're required to host and sponsor once a year, with the support of the Pupil Personnel Services Department. This was the second year that our CPAC was part of the MAS pack, which is the statewide organization of individual special ed parent groups. They provide organization, information, training, and networking opportunities to CPACs such as ours and professionals who collaborate with them. As part of this membership, the, the speaker who gave this presentation in October was from the MAS pack, and she was really good. It was actually the second year that we've had her back, because really, we really like her, and she likes coming to speak to us, so. The workshop was attended by 12 people, and the question and answer session afterwards was very informative. And before that workshop, we held a meet and greet with Cynthia. This was like a month or, or six weeks into the school year, so that families could have a chance to meet her. Cynthia gave a really nice talk and introduced herself and spoke about her background and what brought her to North Reading. And also several members of her staff came to that meeting well. So that was a nice, nice mixer and a good chance for staff to meet families. Our last speaker of the year was in March and was another speaker from the MAS pack, the state organization. This workshop was entitled, Understanding My Child's Learning Style, and we had a great turnout of just over 30 people. And again, this event was paid for and sponsored by the PPS Department. Sort of outside school, specific programming, we continue to be involved with the North Reading community. This was our third season involved with the North Reading TOPS Soccer Program. TOPS Soccer is a community-based training and team placement program for young athletes with disabilities organized by youth soccer association volunteers, in this case, Joe and Abby Ladowski. Soccer is a social sport that many children with needs struggle with. The TOPS program provides a forum where students can play. It builds confidence, provides physical activity, and also enhances a sense of community for parents and volunteers. The program at this point has grown really large. It has over 30 soccer players, each of whom has a volunteer buddy or two to help them out, and most of these are North Reading High School students. This program has grown to include students from Lawrence, Reading, and over in other communities as well. And the collaboration has worked out really well for all involved, and we're looking to continue to work with other members of the North Reading community to work on this type of collaborative programming. Kind of looking ahead to what we want to do next year, one of our, our board members brought to my attention a, a model based out of Newton called Understanding Our Differences. It's a interactive disability awareness curriculum that teaches children to see the person and not the disability. And since 1978, this program has been successfully disseminated to more than 200 schools nationwide. So I've been working with, with Cynthia and the, and the, and the contact people from Understanding Our Differences to talk about the logistics and how this could possibly be implemented, and that's something we're looking at for next year. As a, as a CPAC, we've also been trying to get more, take a more active involvement in the school budget and that issue. So to that end, I went to the town hall that Representative Seth Moulton had in North Reading. It was a Saturday, the, the end of March, I think it was. And I didn't get a chance at that point to ask my question about school funding and his, his thoughts on that, but I did follow up with an email to his office, and he got back to me, so he knows we're here, which is nice. I also represent the CPAC at Superintendent Bernard's monthly parent meetings as well. So sort of in closing, a couple people that I specifically want to thank, certainly including John Bernard, Cynthia Conant, and their staffs for continued support. You know, as Cynthia mentioned, we, we collaborate really well, and this is important to us as, as a CPAC to have a good collaborative relationship with, with the school department. Pam McIntyre, our Vice President, who's done a lot of work specifically with the TOPS Soccer Program, and Vicky Labriola, our Secretary, who does lots of getting all, getting all of our events put in the transcript and on North Reading Patch and really helping with keeping track of records and note-taking and things like that. And last but not least, my wife Deb, who's home helping the kids get ready for their science test so I can be here tonight, so. Most importantly. Does anyone have any questions or?
I do.
Or any thoughts?
Steve, you mentioned that, I'm glad you raised the funding issue. One question I have for you, the, do the various CPACs, is MAS pack kind of a super CPAC with representatives? Because I'm wondering if there's, the CPACs get together to lobby the state and say, you need, or the federal government, you need to come up with more funding for these programs to help, you know, the local taxpayers. Do the CPACs get together, or how does that work?
That's a good question, and that's one of the things that I want to get more active with. I'm not totally sure. I think the MAS pack does some lobbying on that behalf, but I haven't looked into that quite yet. This was something that, you know, I kind of, will admit, I was, I kind of got into this in like March, late March, and definitely want to find out more about that and how we can be an advocate, not just for special ed funding, but overall school funding.
But I'm happy to have, but we're happy to have you involved, because any help we can get on the contact and lobbying front with our state and federal representatives is, is helpful.
Okay. And I'm certainly open to suggestions and ideas. It's not something that we've, either as a CPAC or me personally have, have a ton of knowledge with. I should speak more for myself. Maybe there's somebody else in our group who does.
Right.
But I'm on the learning curve here with, with, with John and Cynthia's help, for sure. So I will, I'm going to just make a note to myself to look into that.
The other question I had is on that, the Understanding Our Differences, would that be a program that would be integrated with the curriculum in the district, or how would, how would that work?
Yeah, so we're taking a look at that for and see if that would be a nice match. We're looking specifically at the middle school for next year, because the middle school is leading to have several substantially separate classrooms starting next year. So Kathy O'Connell and myself and Steve are kind of taking a look at that to see, you know, will this be a good match, and can we implement it? And do we have the resources to do it effectively, to have the right impact?
I'm assuming we can find a lot of information on that online. There's probably, if I type in Understanding Our Differences in Newton School District, I can probably find background information, I would assume, on the.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
There's a lot of information. In fact, you had provided me with a frequently asked questions list, some background information about it. It's, looks like a really.
Sounds great.
Program, absolutely.
I can send it to you, the link. I think sort of, they, they do a lot of different types of programming, but I think sort of the, the, the main idea is, is, you know, they do a lot of work with autism specifically. So they'll bring maybe, they don't have a specific age, but maybe somebody in their twenties or thirties with the diagnosis of autism in to speak to a, a classroom, so that way the classroom can see, you know, an adult with, with this diagnosis. And there's, they, the person would talk about what their experience has been like, what the, what it means to have their diagnosis and things along those lines. So that, it can take variations of that, but I think that's kind of the big umbrella picture of what their, what their programming looks like.
I think if you can get it to John, then he can get it out to all the members, so we could all.
Okay.
Have the information. That'd be great.
Sure.
You have a question?
Yeah. Steve, how long have you been chairperson now?
Good question. Just over three years.
Well, we certainly appreciate your time and your effort. And is that, are you on a term, or do you get elected every year to, to chair the?
I guess that's a good.
I was just curious, because I know it's, I know it's at least your third year that you've been in here.
Third year, yeah. I'd have to check the exact records. It's kind of working right now, so I don't know what the official, we have to have a reelection or.
Life of lifetime.
Lifetime, you can't.
Yeah, apparently, you're stuck with me.
You can't get, well, that's good, that's good.
Sounds like volunteering lifetime.
Yeah.
And again, on behalf of the committee, thank you.
Well, it's a, it's a great special ed department here, the, the, like I said, I can't stress it enough, both John and Cynthia and their staff have been supportive, collaborative, and, you know, my wife and I feel very fortunate and blessed to, to live in this community. We moved here when.
It's great to hear. Even if it's just one person.
Well, two, that counts, but. Anyway, we moved here with, you know, before we had children and when, you know, we were young and in our twenties, and so of course we researched the school system and looked at, you know, test scores and all the stuff you would look at, but, you know, we didn't think, oh geez, we should look into the special ed program in case we need that. But, you know, here we are, and the program's been fantastic. And like I said, I get emails and phone calls all the time from folks who, who've heard the reputation and are considering moving to the town just, just for that, so.
I think we, you know, Cynthia, as a current Director, past Directors, from a layperson's point of view, I think we've done a great job integrating a lot of students into the school system by bringing programs in-house when we can meet their needs. And I think that, from what I've seen, that works almost all the time. And that's one area where I wish the state would recognize when a district does that and, you know, reward us somehow with some funds, because we're saying it's in the best interest of these students to be in their home school district, provided we can give them the right programming. And the state says, that's great, but they don't, they don't give us any funding for that. So that, that's an area where if we could get more funding for building programs internally, I think that would be extremely helpful. I know it would be, so.
Absolutely.
I agree.
If I could, Mr. Bowes, just quickly, I, I've had an opportunity to work with Steve for almost two years now, a little over a year and a half, and he is a very, just a really good, positive, engaged partner working with us. And I, Steve, it can't be overstated that your advocacy and the nature that you present issues to us, working with Cynthia and me, is really so appreciated. You do a very, very nice job, and I do hope you are in, in a position of leadership with the CPAC for some time. It's, it's been a, I think, a good working relationship. Cynthia is, you know, fairly new, but coming up on her first year, but has really done a nice job, I think, bringing the CPAC into a fold where we're working collaboratively to take your word from your introduction, Cynthia. And it's been, it's, it's working really well right now, and we're happy that you're in a position to be able to work with us to, to advance what we need to do for all students. And I want to thank you for that publicly.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think, I've said this before, but community advocates make us accountable.
Absolutely. Steve's great.
That's a good thing, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a first reading of a policy modification. And Mrs. Cope, do you agree?
So you will see in their packet, the copy of Policy JC JCR in red, the proposed changes. Basically, John, can you just, you were taking.
I'm happy.
New regulations, correct?
Yes, I think, I think what happened was with the new legislation around the opioid law, the Governor Baker introduced not that long ago, there, there is some greater language that we're anticipating receiving from both the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health, I think all school districts sometime, and I would assume in the summer months, that is going to ask us to update related policies. So the Policy Subcommittee met back a few weeks ago, actually with, with Mrs. Conant, who just was just presenting to you, who I've kind of charged with researching the language that needs to be included in policies to make sure that we're conforming with the law. But in, in this one policy, so I think we, we made a decision that we would wait on receiving the additional guidance from both DPH and DESE, but in this one policy, we thought that there was both a need to review, because it had been since 2013 that, that that had been done, but also to include some additional language, particularly, I think, our interest, if I'm not mistaken, the committee's interest is around the E, the E cigarettes, right?
And M A S E.
This was from M A S E.
Correct.
Yeah.
There was a recommend, in their latest newsletter, had some recommended language, and that's what, I believe, what item five on, on the first page of the regulations in the red strikes to capture.
We, we added this as a separate item because we already had most of the other items covered, and we wanted to separate this out so that it would be distinguishable on these particular items, E cigarettes, steroids, and substances. There will, will almost certainly be some changes coming further on opioids.
Cliff, does, it's a little ambiguous. Does this pertain to students not possessing, buying, selling, giving away on school property only, or in general?
It says school property or any school function.
Yeah, I, I see that at the end. I, I just.
I don't think in general we can.
I don't think we can either. That's why I thought this was a little ambiguous.
Is it a school function?
No, no, no. And if someone's out.
Oh, the school function, sir.
Right, but if some kid is out somewhere, unless they get arrested and we're notified, we can't.
You see what I'm saying though, Mel? It says, "Students shall not," and then it says, "The school committee prohibits the use."
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But I, I was just curious myself.
That first sentence almost stands like it's.
Generally.
Generally.
And also prohibits it from.
It also says number four, too. It's.
Well, four's a little different. Four says unlawfully. There's a difference. Possessing tobacco by an 18-year-old is lawful.
Right now it's legal, but it may change soon.
Right. But four says unlawfully manufactures, possess. I'm not trying to McBride, just thought it was a little ambiguous, that's all.
The only thing.
I agree 100% with it, but I'm, you know.
I'm wondering if instead of making it five, this is, should it be 4A, since it, doesn't it fit under that subheading?
Well, the other thing you do is just take the second sentence and say, "The school committee prohibits the use or consumption by students of such," and then list the products on school property and any school function, and just incorporate.
You can make that the first sentence.
The second sentence, yeah.
Right. So the first sentence would be, "The school committee prohibits the use of consumption," and then.
Regardless of quantity of possessed by, sell, da, da, da. That's just, it was just a clarification, that's all.
Well, if we leave it as it is.
Yeah.
Then maybe some people will read it and.
I'm fine leaving it as it is.
Take it to heart with the first sentence and not read the second sentence.
My immediate, when I read it, was that it was, it appeared to be.
I think the second sentence defines the first sentence.
All right.
I, I, that's the way I walked away from it, so.
That's fine.
Well, I want to say when we initially looked at it, it was two separate bullets, I believe, and we tried to merge them.
Yeah, and you see what I'm saying though? If you take that second sentence that says, "The school committee prohibits," and then put in, "Regardless of the quantity used," et cetera, et cetera, you could make it into one sentence. But that's fine, I don't want to, I don't want to take away that. We all know what the intention is.
Yeah. So I'm fine with it. I, I'll move to accept the first reading, the revised Student Behavior Policy JC and Student Behavior Code JCR.
Second? Second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I know I'm not on the committee, but can I, a discussion point, just, I want to remind that we may be coming back sooner rather than later on this, because of language reasons. I just want to remind you, if you see this in a few months, that's why.
Okay.
But we don't want to miss those first few.
Right, exactly.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anamis? And the next item on our agenda, eighteen matters.
We didn't have any minutes, Cynthia.
No minutes, budget update.
Great, thank you. So, in your packet this evening was a summary of the FY17 budget that was adopted at the May 2nd meeting last Monday evening. The front cover page does now reflect a fully balanced fiscal 2017 budget, based on the conversation that was held last Monday evening and then further adopted by the committee. So, we now have a $28,546,142 budget, which is within the recommended available revenue by the finance planning team, so that it'd be a budget that's in balance with the available revenue by the town. The front summary just kind of reflects the changes in terms of salaries and expenses. I will kind of just bring your attention to, on page two, the discussion that was held last Monday evening, you'll note that the reduction of the foreign language, you know, teacher at the middle school is no longer being reflected in the list of reductions. Those are then replaced with the last four items on this list. So, we certainly discussed in detail the majority of these items on the list. We replaced the $29,000 with a full elimination of the individual vocational transportation budget. There was about $4,800 additional funds we reduced from the last meeting. We reduced the extraordinary maintenance budget by additional, by $10,000. That would leave $5,000 remaining in that line item. We increased the facility rental revenue offset by $5,000, and the remaining $9,200 will come from school operating budgets. So, that's how we found the $29,000, and that's how we, you know, this list, this list of reductions is how we essentially balance the fiscal 2017 budget. With that being said, I'll open up to any questions.
Anybody question?
Julie's good.
So, the operate, the individual school operating budgets, is that expense budgets?
So, those are expense budgets. Those would be the, you know, operating school expense budgets, instructional materials, general supplies, you know, various items at each school.
So, those have been cut again?
Those have been reduced again.
So, is it even per school, or is it?
No.
No, it's somewhat on a pure-pupil basis.
Oh, okay.
It's higher at the high school, you know, given the number of students. But it's, you know, it's each principal. We have discussed this, Superintendent Bernard and I, with the principals and.
It was 3,600 at the high school, 2,600 at the middle school, and 1,000 at each elementary.
1,000 at each elementary.
Jerry?
No, I just wanted to compliment the superintendent and the Director of Finance and Operation for a tremendous job they did throughout the budget season. It's been a difficult process, for sure, but they've worked tirelessly. I've been present when they were there, present with the finance planning team and the finance committee, and they've done a great job. And Mike, the budget book that you put out this year was extraordinary. You've got a lot of compliments on it from the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen as well. So, it's a great job to get to where you're at. It's not going to be easy to administer this budget over the next fiscal year, but we'll have to do the best we can. And again, if there's any extraordinary expenses, I would recommend to the school committee that we basically go back and look for additional funds, if there's things we haven't anticipated. But great, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, in terms of the facility rental revenue offset, I know we don't want to go crazy in this, but how are we marketing the PAC? Obviously, the first, you know, the first use is for the middle school, high school, and elementary school students. But I think there's some, you know, like, you could maybe get some popular type of artists in there, you know, you're not going to have a U2 or a raging rock band in there, but maybe some folk artists. And if you look at some of the things, if you look at the Cabot Theater in Beverly and the Lynn, the Lynn Memorial Auditorium, again, I know we have to be careful, the kinds of activities we have in there, but are we, are we marketing? Is, are there groups that we could join, or is there something that we could join where our facility is listed as something that's available for certain types of activities?
Yeah, it's a good question, and I think, I think we're very close to kind of getting to that point. We certainly started slow.
Right.
You know, last year, we appointed a, you know, performance, you know, PAC coordinator, Performing Arts Center coordinator, which is part of, you know, her responsibility is not only to oversee the scheduling and make sure the events that are booked in that space goes smoothly and they have the right staff and what each organization needs, but part of that, I think, is the next, we've done a good job getting to that point, I think, in the last year and a half or so, we started to open up that space to outside organizations. I think that's kind of the next step, then to kind of focus on marketing and how we can market and advertise that space to even expand the use of it. I'm happy to report that I think this May and June, you're going to see a lot of activity in that space, coming in this evening.
There's another dancing school out there tonight.
The North Relling Dancing School.
I was going to add to my, I think you'd be, it's being used maybe more than people realize, and I think it might be good for us to present you with kind of a year-end summary of what's going on in there. Because I think, while it's true that, you know, it's maybe, you know, it's still, it's still a young facility, so to speak, but I think it's being used and rented more than people might think. And I think it might be a good discussion item for people to, much like we're starting to do with you now, in presenting you the gifts and donations, kind of on, I think it would be nice to present some sort of a, kind of a spreadsheet of what's been booked and happening in the PAC.
I mean, I will say that I just reviewed the schedule with the Performing Arts Center coordinator and made sure everything was kind of in place. I think it's almost being used almost every weekend in May and June. So, I know we have the North Relling Dancing School.
That's great.
Who's rehearsing this week for a performance this coming weekend.
They used to be at Redding, right?
I think, I think you might be right.
I think they were at Redding, yeah.
We have the North Relling School of Ballet will be using it.
First time.
An organization called Let's Dance in Saugus will be coming in June and using it. So, there's a lot of, you know, the East Coast Dance School will be using it.
That's a good one.
That's a lot.
I think it's being used any more than we think so.
I didn't realize that.
We'll put together a little, a running list to kind of for you as we come up on the end of the school year.
And we've gotten some very positive responses to the facility.
We have.
Yeah. There was the event we had on Saturday with the Northeast Massachusetts Youth Symphony, the comments made from the folks on the stage, Jerry Dolan, the music director of that organization, was extremely complimentary about our facility.
Excellent.
He said that, you know, I personally had promised him, "This is a wonderful facility." He says, "Every bit of it came back," and is right, and North Relling should be very proud of it.
That's great.
So, yeah, very positive feedback.
And they did a very nice job, I thought, acknowledging North Relling in their program, their materials, which go out across the region. So, I think those kinds of things will market it, too.
More people hear that, you know, you've got staff facility than, you know, I think this room is maybe less utilized.
This is a room, exactly, this is a room we could probably use more, too.
Yeah.
Yep. I mean, what is it, seat, 100?
About 145.
145, in total.
I would agree with that.
Because I was thinking, like, I know, you know, some of the area colleges, like Leslie, Simmons, they kind of do those offsites.
Right.
At various high schools.
Yep.
And I think this would be conducive to, you know, a cohort or something like that.
We need to reach out and see what could be available.
My firm used to have regional meetings in facilities somewhat similar to this, not as nice as this actually, but that we would rent out and bring people in from all around to.
We got to fill you up a deck.
Yeah, why not? I think the issue is that you always want to balance it with the revenue versus the wear and tear, right?
Exactly.
And the maintenance.
We want a rock band.
No, don't need rock, exactly.
Right.
But I think it's fair to say, we've established some, some pretty good relationships with some organizations, a lot of which are North Relling organizations, dance schools that are starting to, you know, develop that relationship.
And they'll be, I think, a lot of them will be perennial renters, too, which is good.
What are we charging? What is the charge for?
So, I want to say, it's a three-tiered structure.
Right.
And I want to say, it's, we've kind of moved everything to an hourly basis.
It really varies.
Jeff Simon's, Jeff Simon's had some great ideas during the Facebook participation for all the candidates. He was, and it would be great if some, if it was affordable and some local organizations picked up on this. One of the things he was saying was like, you know, someone should come in and show a classic movie of the month, you know, like The Wizard of Oz one month, and it, it could be a good fundraiser for somebody.
That's a repeat.
Have you seen that already? Oh, okay.
And it do, you know, I think, because the pub, the press is here, and we're being, we're on TV, too, the website for the district has a very, Michael's done a very nice job with a facility rental link that is right on the homepage of our site. I mean, it's very, and it has a comprehensive presentation on the fees, what's, what spaces are available.
The guidelines of the space.
It's good to, it's worth checking out.
And then also, there's a slideshow that actually shows photographs of all the space.
Oh, really?
And it gives you a description of the space.
Is that any his?
No, it's right on the homepage. There's a facility rental link.
Okay.
On the front, front homepage of the, of the website. There's a slideshow, like Michael said, with spaces that are available to be rented and.
So, a performance is $100 an hour for a non-for-profit organization, and then 150 an hour for a for-profit organization, so we.
That's good.
That's the base, and then we add on.
Right, for. Then there are add-ons.
Our staff.
Use of the, use of the light and the sound systems is an add-on.
Custodial, our technicians for using the systems.
Couple tiers of technicians, you know, the technician, a stagehand, someone helping out with the stage, so it's.
So, do we have, like, our staff taping, or, I mean, I know a lot of studios will bring in their own videoographers.
We have, we have had that. And we have some students, some students in tech theater.
So, they have to use our staff.
Can be rent, can be employed, so to speak.
Okay. I was just wondering how that is going, you know, as far as video production goes.
We, yeah, I would say so far, in a couple of the, a few events that we've had, we'll see, there'll be a lot of action this May and June. It's been going pretty smoothly.
Okay.
We also have the Marley floor that the dance schools use.
That's down there right now.
We have that, and they, and they're renting that, so we charge them.
Do we own the Marley floor?
We own it.
We own it.
We did.
Excellent, excellent.
So, that's, that's an attraction, and a lot of schools are interested in that.
Particularly for a dance school.
Yeah. One other question, and that relates to this facility. Can we ever get an explanation of those lights?
It's on the list now, it's on the list, that's tomorrow.
What they're for, how they turn on.
Oh, but, oh, no.
Those lights up there.
I think there's production lights. I think if you were to televise something from here.
But are they just, are they just?
If you were to do something in here, maybe.
Are they different colors? Are they, you know, what do we have up there?
Depends on what you put on there for a filter.
But I think it's pretty much lighting for the purpose of.
It's more if you do like, more of a, I mean, I say like a sort of a stage production.
Televise production.
But I think it's got to be part of the AV training that we.
We have a big meeting coming up on the 18th, on all the AVs, so follow up on the, on the 18th, May the 18th, yeah.
I did want to add, I read, this piqued my interest, P-I-Q-U-E-D, not P-E-E or P-E-A-K-E-D. There's a story in the transcript this week, and I also watched Selectmen's meeting, Selectman Yule questioning the town school budget fairness. And one of the quote, one of his quotes in here is, "I don't know why their budget has to be so high, unless there's a lot of mandates from the state." I just, you know, I appreciate Mr. Yule's concern, but I, you know, he needs to be aware that the Foundation Budget Review Committee, which is made up of state legislators and senators, reported that public education is being underfunded by $2 billion by the state. So, if he wants to look for problems, that's the first place to look. As far as the fairness goes, as long as I've been on the school committee, and I started my 13th year now, anytime there's been extra money that's been added to Chapter 70, it's always come to us. The Selectmen have been very, very fair to us and the town administrator. When there's been extra Chapter 70 money, we've gotten 100% of it. And this year, it's $86,000. You know, if you wanted to break that down, 6634, we would have gotten about 54, $56,000 instead of the 86,000. The last thing is, he talks about us needing to think out of the box, and he says, if we had put, if we had followed the suggestion to put solar energy, solar panels in our parking lot, we could have paid for a lot of things. And, well, that was vetted by the finance planning.
We did that study.
Right, that was vetted by the finance planning team, and it was unanimously, everybody was against it. It would have raised about $10,000, and it would have caused a nightmare for plowing, we would have lost parking spaces.
Yeah, the benefit was so low.
But I just, I just want to make it clear, we overturned every stone.
It was 20,000.
We've overturned every stone here to look both for ways to cut back on our spending and ways to raise revenue. We just talked about, you know, renting out our facilities.
And he also wanted to know why we didn't implement the parking fee, although he wasn't necessarily recommending it, but he got tons of calls.
Well, yeah, it was, it sounded confusing.
Yes.
Very confusing. Well, it's, it's actually quoting him, so you can understand how confusing it really is, but, but I wanted to, Mr. Chair, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the Board of Selectmen, with the exception of Mr. Yule, the town administrator, the finance director, and the finance committee, and the finance planning team.
Yes.
Although, you know, we go back and forth on this budget process, here we are again with a balanced budget, a lot of cooperation, a lot of help from the Board of Selectmen, particularly our finance director over there, Liz Rock and Mike Gilberto. They're nothing but cooperative and work with us. I don't know where Jeff Yule's coming from, his chair and his vice chair, the town administrator and the finance director, all from the town side are on the finance planning team.
Right.
I don't know whether he doesn't communicate with them, he doesn't understand the process, I'm not sure where he's coming from. As far as our budget, he has the opportunity to come to our budget hearing, come to our meetings, and again, I don't know where he's coming from with this stuff, but to the rest of the Board of Selectmen, I think, again, they've really, really been helpful in this process.
One of the interesting things, and it's something that I've looked at from the beginning of my tenure as a school committee man, is when we start talking about the town-school budget fairness, like, there's the town over here.
Right.
And the school over here, the school and the town are together.
School is the town, the town is the school.
And the 6634 is not cast in stone.
Right.
It's not written anywhere, okay?
And there are an awful lot of families in this, in this community that have children who go to the schools and who benefit from the schools. And then there are a lot of people who have graduated from these schools and are getting their fairness out of it, and many more that will use it in the future. There isn't a town and a school, there is the Town and North Relling, Inc. And we achieve a very nice balance in that, in appropriateness of the limited revenue that we have to share among the various departments in town through the finance planning team, and we do a great job of that. And Mr. Yule ought to study up on that before he starts speaking out.
Well, he's only been on the Selectmen for five years, so it may be a learning curve, I'm not sure, so.
All right, well, we need to move on. Anything, anything further?
So, does this, is this list acceptable to everybody? I'm sensing it is, but, okay.
Up to you guys to manage it.
Cross our fingers.
No, and I just, I think people have said it, but I just, I do want to acknowledge, particularly Michael's work, this is so, so much his wheelhouse, and it's, you know, we've spent an awful lot of time together these last several months.
Do you want to echo Jerry's point, though, in that there's not a lot of wiggle room in this budget? And if we get un, you know, unpredicted, unprojected expenses, especially if, you know, there's always the potential of special education, outplacements, or move-ins, there's not a lot of money to fool around with in this budget.
Well, I think we, I think we did a nice job, I mean, I hope you think, we did a nice job last week presenting to you what, where the potential risks do lie, you know? And we did that for a reason. We wanted, we wanted people to know, but, you know, you, I think what we can confidently commit to you, to you and to the community is, we will work with others to diligently manage the budget and make sure that we do our best to, to keep things in line to the degree that we're able to do so. We will certainly make, you know, every effort to do that, but there are some unanticipated things that could arise, and we just can't predict them right now, but.
Well, one other thing, we've, and this is all part of having a beautiful new complex up here, we've inherited additional costs that are now part of this budget.
We have.
Like $150,000 fee to manage the wastewater treatment plant. I'm not complaining about it, I'm just making it known that that's now part of our budget, and we absorbed that.
And that's just one example.
And that's one example. I think we've done a tremendous job, Wayne and his staff, of keeping the utility costs reasonable. And I think the fact that we're now in two, you know, airtight, insulated, new window buildings is helping us in terms of energy costs, and also Mother Nature helped us this winter in terms of energy costs. But we've absorbed, absorbed a lot of new costs in here. And, you know, one of the, one of the positions that we saved was a custodian position. If we had had to eliminate a custodian position, I think we would have been in big trouble next year, because we're already short. Because we're already short, based on the industry standard average square feet per custodian. And if we had had to cut another, I think we would've been in big trouble. So, I, I, like Jerry, I know, I think, I speak for the whole board, we really appreciate the cooperation of the town administrator and finance planning team, and to help us get to our, our goal.
I think coming, coming to our workshops and listening to us, you know, go back and forth, and, you know, what can we stick with, and what do we have to go back to, you know?
And I know we're not bashful about asking for money, and, you know, they sometimes causes a little bit of us to bang heads, but at the end of the day, you know, we get it resolved.
And Mr. Mosseri and Mr. Gilberto were at a lot of those meetings.
Yep.
Not, not just the finance planning team, but as Julie said, the workshops. I know Michael Gilberto was at at least a couple of them, I was at one I wasn't at, he was probably there too.
He was.
They were dealing with some issues on their side, too, obviously, with the Department of Public Works, and they still made time to, to, to work with us and help us get to the goal.
And I do, Michael and I, I think, I think I can speak for Michael, we, we appreciate the level of engagement that the school committee has too. I mean, you folks are right there alongside of us, you know, Jean, it's unfortunate Ms. Embry is not here to hear this, but as she sat on the finance planning team this year and was, was the chairman, and we appreciate very much the level of support that you give to us too. And you're right there with us to, to work through this, and we appreciate that, so, thank you.
I have a brief confession, that I said a few moments ago that I was in agreement with the budget. I am acquiescing to the budget.
Understood, understood.
I'm not happy with the budget, but there is no more revenue in town, and we have distributed it, I feel, as fairly as it can be distributed, in spite of what Mr. Yule is, is saying. And I appreciate all of the effort that everybody put into it to get to this point, but it is what it is, so here we are. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is bids and donations, and we have a, a memorandum describing Hood School Parent Association donation. Is there a motion on that?
Yes, can I make the motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a seven hundred eighty, seven hundred eight dollar, eighty cent donation from the Hood School Parents Association to purchase technology-related items for grades one and two?
I'll second and say that this is one of the reasons, not one of the reasons, we continue to cut our expense budgets, and the, the parent-teacher organizations and individual citizens are what's making up for that. It's not right, but it is what it is right now, and, you know, we continue to thank them for just the great service to the schoolchildren of North Reading.
Any further discussion? Here is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we have another donation. From the North Reading High School Hall of Fame Association, support cost associated with upgrades to the athletic facilities, including an irrigation sprinkler system. I have a motion.
I'll move to accept with gratitude a $10,000 donation from the North Reading High School Hall of Fame Association to support costs associated with upgrades to North Reading High School's athletic facilities, including an irrigation sprinkler system.
Second?
I just wanna add, this is hopefully one of many we'll be hearing over the next weeks and months. We have the money committed, I'll get into the, some details in a second when we come up to the Athletic Facilities Committee report. This is a very generous donation, and the check was presented to us last week by Mr. Chuck Carucci, who's the head of the Hall of Fame Committee.
Very much appreciate it. Anything further? Any more questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Let's see, next we have subcommittee updates, and Athletic Facilities Committee met on May four. Mr. Webster and Mr. Fennecia, somebody wanna give a?
So as I mentioned, we've, I think I mentioned this last week, we've secured what we believe is sufficient funds for this project. We may have to raise a little more money, but I'm confident it may be only be a, a small amount. We do have a slight complication that we're dealing with right now related to the building project and the drainage system to make sure what we do doesn't disturb the drainage system. There was a meeting on Friday that Marty Tilton, Mr. Fennecia, Mr. Bernard attended with representatives from Gilbane, including Joanna Cripp. And also PMA was there.
Correct.
And I guess from, I wasn't able to attend the meeting due to a last-minute schedule change. I don't know if, if either you wanna give us an update on, just kind of the general update on that meeting and how it went.
There was some concerns, there are concerns by the Secondary School Building Committee, and I think obviously the town administrator, actually all of us, that if we go forward with our plan to irrigate in, see, on sod, the current, the new fields, the softball field and the all-purpose field, that that could or will jeopardize the warranty that we get from Gilbane for the drainage in the, the surfaces of the fields. So we're trying to figure out a way where we can go in, install the irrigation, put in the sod without impacting the warranty. And I think Gilbane and PMA are investigating that, and we're hopefully gonna have some kind of an answer for us tomorrow.
They hope for tomorrow.
John, if you wanna add to that, go ahead.
No, I, I think you said it well, I, I think there, I would add that I think there was optimism that that could be achieved. They were gonna be hitting it hard, I think, to try to have something for us for tomorrow night's meeting, in terms of an amended warranty or?
Bottom line is, once we alter anything that they're gonna do down there, if we tell them just don't even, not to seed it, that alters the landscape and basically impacts the warranty. So what we're planning on doing is this, you know, fairly significant changes, not seeding it, irrigating it, and sodding it.
There was some concern that this related to the drainage for the entire school project, and my understanding is that was made clear Friday, that it's only that subsurface drainage in the field, not the drainage that's way deep down there that comes from up here.
That's the impression.
That has no impact on that at all.
A big storage facility. And the likelihood of it, what we're gonna, what we plan on doing impacting anything down there is?
Almost zero.
It's, it's real, it's really, really small.
Right.
Right, but for a contractor, this is an opportunity to dump the warranty.
Oh, there's, this is, I'm watching, look, the bottom line is, if we do this, okay, and we haven't necessarily discussed a credit, but it, it precludes them from having to seed it, it precludes them from having to water it.
Fertilize it.
Fertilize it and maintain it.
Right, they, they, right, so that's a big, that's a saving.
We would be assuming that responsibility if we go in there.
That's worth about, as I, as I said at the last SSBC meeting, about $4.94.
Well, the seeding part, but I think to them, there's, there's some real incentive, you know?
We're not talking about what it's, what it actually costs now, we're talking about what it's worth as a credit.
And the other thing is that.
Minimize that.
We now have an engineering, we now have an engineering plan too, by the way.
Right.
To, to install the irrigation and the sod, so that's ready, so that if we can get through this one hang-up, we're ready to go to bid on the, on the work.
We've raised a hundred three thousand dollars.
And it may be more, 'cause we had to spend money for the engineering plans.
Right. Right, we had to spend 12,000 for the engineering plan, so we have 91,000 to spend on the project. All that money's been committed. We've told the youth sports organizations to hold off on giving us their checks until we can make sure we go forward.
Yeah.
If we can't go forward. And, and the thing is, it just, the warranty issue has to be settled, but it just makes so much sense to do this now, rather than have them plant grass, which, which we know will grow, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna last. We've seen this before, if it's not sod, it won't last.
And if we don't have irrigation.
And if we don't have irrigation.
Because even if they're able to water it for the rest of this season and the beginning of next season, for us to try to water that, it, without irrigation, it's impossible, we wouldn't be able to do it.
Well, with, with these possible issues that they're raising, it's all, it's almost like they're saying, leave it as is and ultimately not have a usable field.
Right, that's exactly.
You know?
Well, that's the other drawback, if we don't sod it, this field's not gonna be ready, in my estimation, till the fall of seventeen.
Oh, the athletic director said that also, the fall, you need two growing seasons. With the sod, you need about two weeks. If it's put down right and irrigated, in two weeks, you can be using it. So we're not, obviously, we're not gonna move forward until this issue is cleared, you know, the, the town administrator had concerns as it's Selectmen, which makes sense.
Mm-hmm, and I think we need a vote of the SSBC.
Right, exactly. So, you know, we have the money, it makes perfect sense, but we're not gonna just plow ahead and, and cause problems for the town or, or the schools. So that's where we're at with that.
Well, it may be that a reasonable credit can be achieved, but I, I've had a lot of experience with credits and, and extras, and the usual case is you don't get ten cents on the dollar on a credit.
No, and quite frankly, I'm just speaking for myself, but if we were able to preserve the warranty, I think that, you know, the credit would be something we might be able to just give up on.
If they'll preserve the warranty, exactly.
Amending the warranty or something, based on what we end up doing.
That would be the consideration, yeah, yeah.
That did get mentioned Friday.
The other thing we did discuss, but it also, I should mention, it seemed like it would be too complicated, and I'm not sure that Manafort, which is the contractor down there, is interested, is having them bid on the project.
We talked about.
But then we'd have to figure out a way, how would we pay for it? Because this is private money, it's not coming out of the school project, so that, that really didn't.
They, they also expressed that they, they need to move on to another project.
Right, right, so.
And I'll say this, the groups, the, the youth groups, the Hall of, everybody's pretty excited about trying to do this. I mean, the softball people were really, really impressed with the softball.
I think you could start to see what it's gonna look like.
Well, you see that, it was funny, Kurt Farazani was so excited about the warning track, he's like, "It's got a warning track." Because the warning track goes all the way around, not only the outfield, but all the way around the field. It looks like a pro, looks like a professional field.
I think Kurt's got like ten or twelve daughters that play softball, so.
Yeah, he's really excited about it.
Yeah.
I've heard some comments about the throwing area not being long enough.
Oh, I think we settled that.
We resolved that, I think, I think we resolved it.
Did a little research on that myself, I suspect that what has happened is we've got a design that is thus standard.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say.
And that, you know.
Should be acceptable.
Done by good people, I, I put it off that way.
We talked to the track coach when he was told what the dimensions were.
He said that would be adequate.
He had bad information, and he said what the dimensions are is adequate. Plus, there's a, there's a slope.
There's a bank there.
There's a bank there, so anything that goes beyond that's gonna go right into that.
Far as, but you can't measure on the slope.
Right, exactly, but it's not, it's probably not gonna go that far anyway, he told us.
As far as the javelin drivers on the access road will proceed at their own risk.
No, we're not throwing the javelin.
All right, is that all from the Athletic Facilities Committee?
Mm-hmm.
Subcommittee schedule and meeting dates and times, the Athletic Subcommittee meets May ten at 12:30 at Superintendent's Office, the SSBC, May tomorrow, May ten, at 5:30 right here in the Distance Learning Lab, NORCAM Board of Directors, May 26th, at 7:00 PM NORCAM Office, Finance Planning Team meets June third at 8:15 in the Superintendent's Office. Administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so just a couple of items in the report for you tonight. I just, I'm probably gonna keep this as a standing item, at least for a little while longer, on the Little School Roof Replacement Project, just, I wanted to call your attention, I had emailed to you all, I think, late last week, the award letter that had been issued by the town, so the construction bid award letter went out on May fourth to Stanley Roofing of Ipswich, they are the company that's going to be doing the bulk of the work at the Little School, a reputable company, Compass Management, our project manager has worked with them before, did do a thorough checking of their references, and we're excited to have them onboard, this, the project remains on schedule. I thought I would give you the date for the graduation commencement exercise of the class of 2016, hoping you all can attend. The, the date is Friday, June the tenth. Hopefully, we will be outside at 6:15 PM, if you could just kind of convene in the office of the principal, I think, as is tradition, by about 5:45, we'll be marching down, hopefully outside down.
I gotta tell you, that was, that was fun last year, marching down the hill, I mean, that was, that was so much fun. And I know last year they had the student who played the bagpipe.
I don't think we have a bagpipe player this year, unfortunately, I'm not sure.
But marching, marching down there, I think, I know the kids loved it, and, you know, it was just, a lot of good pictures from, you know, marching down the hill.
Yeah.
People will be ready this year.
It's four weeks from Friday, so it's, it's coming fast, so, I thought it was a date to get on your calendars now. And I just, I wanted to bring back to the committee's attention that you might remember, I'm certain you'll remember through the, the budget deliberations, that there was talk about, does North Reading have an education foundation? Where is it, what's, and so, as I think all of you know, but I'm not so sure that it was widespread knowledge that the, that we do have an ed foundation, so I did reach out to, to John Murphy, who I think you all know, the town moderator, who had been chairing the ed foundation, along with Maureen Vaca, who also is still interested in, in doing some work with the ed foundation, and there's been a few other people, new people, that have expressed interest in maybe, for lack of a better way to say, you know, to energize that group or whatnot, to, to see if there might be something that they can do to, to help the school district kind of supplant its budget through the work of the ed foundation. So I'm hosting a meeting tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning to just, I think, talk about where the foundation is presently. They had received recently their 501(c)(3) status, and talk about what its future might be to the benefit of the district. So I just wanted you to know that we did not lose sight of that, that conversation that happened during the budget deliberations, and I, I would expect that I have more of an update for you at our next meeting, so.
Have a question. Do you know if Marcy Bailey put out a Facebook post, 'cause there are, there are several people who had expressed interest, do you know if any?
So what I, what I do know, similar to that, is I do know Mrs. Castro, Deanna Castro, and Eric Evans.
Right.
Who I think was here at the, the night of the budget hearing, have been kind of working the social media, so to speak. As far as I know, there are three additional people interested in coming tomorrow, along with John Murphy, Maureen Vaca, and myself. Beyond that, I don't know. I had asked people to RSVP to me, I had put it in my newsletter, an announcement there, so, and they were working, like I said, social media, so right now, that's what I know. But anyone's welcome to come, so even if they didn't email me by today, they can still come. I just wanna make sure we had the right room for the meeting, depending on the number of people. But anyone is welcome if they have an interest in, you know, I think those folks that particularly have a financial background, and also maybe a fundraising background, or just have the time to, and wanna get involved, this is an opportunity to do that, so.
John, just one question, the, the people that were involved prior, have they been in touch with other communities? Because I know there's pretty active foundations in other communities.
I can tell you that the, the window of time between when I had been appointed the superintendent and had it started, and Kathy Willis was still working the job, and we were kind of in that, those few transition months, I attended a meeting, and there was a time when we brought in folks from the Newbury Port Education Foundation, I'm not sure if they call it exactly that, but it's, you know, to get the point, whatever that similar group is. And they did talk about what they were doing. They've had a longstanding, very, I think, successful foundation, but I think my, my impressions are that they're just, there aren't enough worker bees, quite honestly, that, to take this on. It can't be an organization that exists with the work of three or four people, it needs to have a greater group, a larger group, a number, a larger number of people working on this. You know, I'm not so sure that John Murphy is going to be able to continue on the foundation, but he was willing to come to the meeting tomorrow to kind of talk about where things were at, and I think, you know, I, I certainly, I hope I'm not saying something out of school, so to speak, but I don't think I am, that, but I think he's looking to kind of pass the baton, if you will. So I really don't know, I don't know what's gonna happen, you know, I probably would know more after tomorrow, but, but there, you know, there may have been other foundations that the group brought in.
I know they talked, I think, the one in Reading, maybe, I think they talked.
And they very well could have, I'm just, I, that's the only one that I was aware of, because I was in that, kind of that position of becoming.
Because I would think, you know, our PAs or PTAs, you know, that would be, you know, a good place for them to focus their efforts.
I think what my impressions were then, and they are today, that that's what it needs. It needs a good working group of people that just wanna kind of take the bull by the horns and.
So we had three board members, we had John, Maureen Vaca, and David Troughton, correct?
Right, I did reach out to David too, he, he had a commitment for tomorrow.
But are they all planning on, you know, do they plan on, other than John, have, have David, are they really looking to kind of get a new board?
David, David indicated to me, it was all by email, but he indicated he could not be here tomorrow, but was willing to be involved. Maureen Vaca led me to that same place, although she will be there tomorrow.
Good.
In the sense I got from John was that, John Murphy was that, you know, it just was, it was hard with his, his work, but, but he may have changed his mind since the time I talked to him.
But Julie mentions, it, it needs to be more like a PTO organization in, in, in that you have a group, right?
Right, and what I've seen happened in other districts where I've worked is that, I don't wanna say the PAs lose a lot of their, their work, their drive to fundraise for individual schools, but sometimes those individual efforts kind of come together for a foundation like this, so, you know, 'cause then you're kind of, you know, fundraising for the whole district versus individual schools, so I don't know if that's something that people would be in favor of, or?
Be careful, you have to balance it, so you don't take it from one to the other, right? Right, I mean, the goal is to try to find additional financing options and finding, I know Boxford has a really successful one. I've been following some of the things, you know, a couple of years ago, they bought and donated a grand piano to, you know, the high school theater group and things like that.
And I, where I teach now in Danvers, looking at their foundation that they have, I mean, they do a lot of work for teachers and, and professional development assistance, but I don't see the individual schools' PAs as generating as much money as our PAs do in North Reading, so I don't know if, if that is kind of the direction it could go.
Yeah.
You know, we, this is slightly off subject, but it is donations. We had a, an email alerting us to this past week being National Teachers Appreciation Week, and the, the other contributions that are made to schools for miscellaneous things, and a list of things for the batch, who was, was on that email. Hundreds of items, something in the order of 500, a thousand dollars worth of, of notebooks and pencils and things that we cannot afford under our expense budget, which is a terrible thing, but that's the way it is. And, and so there are, there are already, all of the, the parent associations are being taxed already.
We're maxed out.
They've been tapped, what we need in the, in the education association is the, is, is a bunch of recent Powerball winners who are.
Did anybody hit that over the weekend?
Someone in New Jersey, someone in person.
One person.
I think it was Chris Christie.
I'm hoping that it was a relative of mine, but I'm not sure.
I'm hoping that it was a relative of mine, but I'm not sure. Just an relative.
And I know recently, my daughter's first grade class, they were looking for those B-bots.
Oh, yeah.
One of the B-bots that they showed us at the batch. And through, I believe it might have been the Donors Choose website. I'm, I'm not, I don't, but there was matching funds from corporate industry, you know, industry that, you know, matched some of the parent donations. So I think that also, you know, we have to kind of-
That's actually a very good website, DonorsChoose.org, I think it is. They fund tons of, a lot of it is urban schools, but they'll fund any school. If you come up with a worthwhile project, they'll help.
I mean, I want to say we got the email mid-morning, and by noon time, the B-bots were purchased. It was that quick turnaround.
We have a very benevolent population.
Yes, we do.
And, you know, we have GE moving to Boston, the headquarters to Boston. Maybe we'll catch some of their executives with some big money.
I also hear that Ocean State Job Lots is generous to the communities in which they locate, so they'll be someone that we probably should be hitting up as soon as they open their doors.
I actually have a little information on that.
Oh, okay.
They came to the Community Impact Team meeting last Tuesday.
Oh, great.
And did a presentation to the group. And they are very interested in becoming a benevolent partner in the community.
Really? We'll try to get an exclusivity with the school department, seriously.
I, I think they're looking to do some nice work here. Curious, it was a good, good hour that we spent.
Wow. That's great. We have no correspondence. Future business. We have a regular meeting on May twenty-third at seven PM at the Little School, and June sixth, town meeting, six-thirty, Superintendent's Conference Room. And a regular meeting on June twenty at seven PM here in the Distance Learning Lab, and again on June twenty-seventh at seven PM here in the Distance Learning Lab.
That will be on summer schedule.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion on it? I don't think that's discussable, is it?
It could be.
Hold, Eva.
Aye.
Before there's a discussion.